Two-mile circle. And then we'll get back to the right place.
Okay. Seven o'clock. I'd like to welcome you to the Lunenburg zoning board of appeals. I'm going to tell you how we will proceed, but first I have to read you a notification that this hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law. And please be advised that this meeting will be broadcast live through Lunenburg Local Access Cable on Facebook Live on the public access Facebook page and will be able to be found on the Lunenburg Public Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. To participate remotely from a computer, go to Zoom Meeting. Computer app users may use it. Raise hand feature. I'd like to introduce you to the board. To my left is Lisa Normandin, the board secretary. I'm Alfred Gravel. This is James Bezakowski, Hans Winthrop, Patrick Callahan, Tony Nacastro, Don Gurney, and Steve Duba. The way the hearing will go is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on their application or submission of additional documents. You'll please come forward to the mic and give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions they might have on the application while you are at the mic. There will be a public comment period. If you'd like to speak, please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and please address all comments and questions to the board. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the first application.
Okay. Well, the first hearing was for 100 Laurel Lane, and the applicants were seeking a special permit to allow the creation of two parcels from one existing lot containing 1.97 acres. Each parcel would contain 50 feet of frontage in the Residence A and Residence B zone, which requires 100 feet of frontage currently. The applicant sent a memo on December 13 and said they -- oh, that's the wrong one. I'm sorry. Let this email serve as notice that we would like to withdraw our application, and that's from Erin V. Steves. So that hearing is over.
We'll have to -- I need a motion to allow them to withdraw.
I'll make the motion to allow them to withdraw.
I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And with that, I'll ask for a --
Aye.
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 And aye. With that, they are withdrawn.
Number five.
And with that, I will ask you to read the next.
The next hearing is 39 Pearl Street. Application for a special permit. Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicants are Raymond and Gloria Cloutier, 438 Sugar Road, Bolton, Mass., 01740. The undersigned makes application as follows. Special permit pursuant to zoning bylaw section 250-7.2B and 7.4A1. An application for the same dated 11/5/23 was submitted to the building inspector and was denied by the same for the reasons stated in the letter attached here to. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, 250-7.2B and 7.4A1. The street address is 37 Pearl Street, Assessors Map 122, parcel 30. Name and address of each holder of legal title to the land, which is the subject of this case, is Cloutier Family Realty Trust, and it's 438 Sugar Road. That was an error. In Bolton, Mass., 01740. And the date is recorded in Western Northern District Registry of Deeds Book 10524, Page 290, and recorded March 8, 2023. They have no knowledge of a prior appeal, application, or petition concerning the land or building involved in this case. And that is signed by Raymond and Gloria Cloutier, if I'm saying it correctly, on November 9 of 2023. Project narrative. The subject property is located at 37 Pearl Street, which is shown on Assessors Map 122 as parcel 30. The property is located on Lake Shirley and contains approximately 15,681 square feet of land, making the lot nonconforming with respect to land area. The lot contains an existing single-family dwelling accessed via a paved driveway. The existing dwelling is serviced by a private water supply well and an on-site sewage disposal system. The entirety of this existing house is located between 50- to 100-foot buffer zone and is located within side yard zoning setback, 9.9 feet to the eastern property line. There are multiple accessory detached structures on the site, including a garage shed, 2.9 feet to the western property line, and a gazebo area located on the lower yard, 9.7 feet to the eastern property line, and 13.4 feet to the southern property line. The entire property is located within the Residence A zoning district. Proposed conditions. The applicant is proposing to raise the existing structure and construct a new dwelling on the property. The proposed structure has been placed on the lot such that it will not be located closer to the eastern property line than the existing dwelling. The construction of the dwelling will require the construction of a new sewage disposal system. Additionally, the resulting construction will necessitate the removal of the existing shed, which encroaches the side yard setback and the existing garage. The gazebo, which encroaches the side and rear yard setbacks, shall be demolished and removed as well. As the project involves the removal of an existing nonconforming structure, the building commissioner has required the filing of the special permit application pursuant to sections 250-7.2B and 250-7.4 of the protective bylaw. The special permit criteria. The questions and answers are as follows. A: Will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The reply: The proposed use of the property is the same as the existing use, a single-family residence. As such, the proposed action will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous, as it will not add additional traffic and does not constitute a new danger of fire. Will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The reply: The improvements will increase the assessed value of the property and also the market value of the property. As such, we expect the proposed dwelling to have a positive effect on land values in the neighborhood. C: Will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightlines of an open use? The response: The proposed use will remain unchanged. The applicant has hired ATA Construction to design the proposed house to ensure that the dwelling -- the proposed dwelling fits in with the character of the neighborhood. D: Will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? The reply: As mentioned, the proposed use will continue to be a single-family residence. The structure will not be located closer to the property lines than the existing structure and will not produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare that would be detrimental to the adjacent properties. This memo dated November 2 to the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals. The purpose of this letter is to provide written authorization to allow staff from Dillison Roy Civil Design Group, Incorporated, to represent our proposed project at 37 Pearl Street. Respectfully submitted, Raymond and Gloria Cloutier, the applicants. There is also a list of abutters that were all notified two weeks prior to this hearing. And there is a copy of the deed from the Assessors Office, and the field card from the Assessors Office, and the building commissioner's request for determination. I won't read all the minutia, but the comments. "The new structure does not constitute a reconstruction, but rather is a new structure on the lot once the existing nonconforming structure is voluntarily removed." Section 257-2 addresses voluntary demolition of a nonconforming structure. And that's signed. Brian Gingras, zoning official. And there are plans submitted and a site plan as well. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And with that, I would invite the applicant or representative up to address.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you, Lisa, for reading the application. I am Ryan Proctor. I'm with Dillison Roy Civil Design Group, representing the owners and the applicants, Ray and Gloria Cloutier, and their project at 37 Pearl Street. As Lisa just read during the narrative, this project involves the demolition of an existing nonconforming single-family structure on the lot and the construction of a new three-bedroom single-family structure, which we've located further away from the edge of Lake Shirley, which is indicated on the plan. So if you'll bear with me, I'll just walk over and walk you through the plan real quickly.
Bring the mic.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. So as I mentioned, the project's located at 37 Pearl Street, which is at the north, the upper side of the plan here, and the property fronts on Lake Shirley, indicated in the blue hatching here. The existing single-family house, I've drawn in dashed red, and I've labeled the dimension, the existing setback to this northern property line at 9.9 feet, and that is the existing nonconforming portion of the existing house. So what we've done with the proposed house is we've held that 9.9-foot setback so that we're not proposing any structure closer to the property line than what's there currently. Additionally, the existing house is located within the buffer zone, as noted in the narrative, the buffer zone of Lake Shirley. So we have shifted the proposed house further away to provide a significant increased setback to Lake Shirley as we moved it closer to Pearl Street. Pearl Street does not have a right-of-way. It's an access easement on a dead end on Lake Shirley, so the easement for Pearl Street actually ends a couple of properties up. So the front lot line is drawn off the record property, the property line, as in the deed, which is actually over Pearl Street slightly. As mentioned in the narrative, the proposed house will require a new septic system that will be located between the house and the water, which is where the current existing system is. We're actually able to provide an increased setback from Lake Shirley. The existing system is located closer to Lake Shirley than what we're proposing. There is a well on the property I've indicated on the plan. It is just south of the proposed driveway, which is indicated here in this gray hatching. And we are proposing to remove a large portion of the existing driveway, which is currently accessed via on the south side of the lot, and there's no existing garage parking on the property. We have filed with Conservation for the work within the buffer zone. We are set to appear before them in early January, and we have filed with the Board of Health for the new septic design, and we have received preliminary comments from them. We're scheduled to appear before the board on Monday night. I visited the property today with respect to sightlines for the abutting property. The property to the north has a house on it that is two stories. We're proposing a one-story house with a walkout at the lower level. There is a house across the street and currently with the vegetation on the abutting properties and the house location of the existing house location and the proposed house location on our property. I don't see any significant impacts or deterioration of existing sightlines for any of the abutting properties across Pearl Street or on either side of Pearl Street. I think I'll leave it at that. If -- actually, excuse me, I want to correct the record for one thing. This happened after. In the narrative, it says that we are proposing to remove the existing shed. The applicant would actually like to relocate the shed, so currently the shed is a couple of feet off the property line on the southern property line, again in the red hatching. I've showed them relocation of the shed, which would be five feet off the property line adjacent to the proposed dwelling. So with that, I will leave it there. If there's any questions from the board or comments on the application, I'm happy to address those now.
Okay. Thank you. The shed you're talking about, there's a fence that goes along right where that shed is, and they're almost touching.
There is.
Is the fence the property line?
The fence is on our property by -- I don't have the exact dimension on it, but a couple of feet, I think, three to four feet.
Couple of feet on it. Okay, so that's why.
Yep.
Okay. And on that side yard, that same side yard where that small shed is?
Yep.
It appears, looking at the plan, that the old house was further away from that sideline than the proposed new house. Is that correct?
That's correct. The new house does comply with that side yard zoning setback. We are just over 15 feet away from that side yard setback. The setback on the plan that I've colored here is drawn in blue.
Okay. And the other question on the garage you're showing here, that's a detached garage from what I saw, and I'm not sure if it was used as a garage. Is that correct?
I think it's more of a storage shed.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, it's not a vehicular garage.
Okay. And I'll open it up to the rest of the board now.
I don't have any questions. I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions?
No questions. Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Now, say you're still going to go for -- you have to go for the septic approval. You said you haven't done that yet.
Yep, so we're working with that. We received preliminary comments from the Shoba Board of Health. We did request some local upgrade approvals that we're set to appear before the Board of Health meeting on Monday night.
Okay. It has two tanks, correct?
Yes, septic tank and a pump chamber.
1,500 gallons apiece?
1,500 for the septic tank, 1,000 gallons for the pump chamber.
Okay. All right. I'll ask if anybody would like to speak from the public. Please.
Hello. My name is Nicole Kirwack. I'm at 32 Pearl Street, so I'm in a butter to this property. I'd like to just ask the board to consider the comment about the views. So I have a two-story home that is on the other side of this, and with all the plans that were provided, there is no heights that say what the existing ridge height and the new ridge heights are. So to be able to evaluate if it's really going to affect my sightline, I can look out of my bay window, sit on my couch, look over this current property as it stands as a single height, and see the water. So when you look at the special permit and try to evaluate, you know, whether or not it will affect my property value, I can't really take a look at these plans and understand that the existing ridge height is this, and the new ridge height will be above that. So I would ask the board to just try to -- if we could get that information so that then I could evaluate it and understand how it's going to actually affect my property.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And with that, let's answer that question on the height. Current height and the new proposed height.
So the current height of the house, I don't have the exact number. I know it is a single family or a single-story house currently, which is what we're proposing. The new ridge height will be higher than the existing house, but it is just a single-story again with a walkout. So you'll drive into the garage and maybe one step up or two steps up into the first floor elevation. I think from the top of foundation to the ridge, it's 23 feet for the proposed house.
23 feet?
23. And the bylaw has max height of 38 feet.
Is that to the peak?
To the peak. Yep, the highest peak. Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, so are you saying that the height of the new existing proposed structure is not going to exceed what the bylaw says?
It will not exceed the max height for the bylaw. No, we're well under the max height.
Because that would be flagged by the building inspector anyways, right, with your plans?
I'd imagine so. Yep.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It doesn't answer the --
It doesn't answer the height of the other building, is what you're saying.
It doesn't answer the question, and that's because the way that the building is placed on the site now, it's being moved closer to the road. So there are existing ridge heights at certain points, but now that's going to be moved closer and change the view. So I just think that the architectural plans that are provided don't have all the information there to really evaluate what I'm going to look at when I see, because I can't quite understand where those are going to be in comparison. And if you don't have an existing ridge height today, how am I supposed to know that 23 feet? Like, it's a small camp that's there now. It could be very well that that's 15 feet, and then I'm going to have a 23-foot piece there. I really don't know what the comparison is.
Okay. I think what Hans is getting to is the actual height max, I think, is 35 feet?
38.
38. And they're proposing a 23, which is significantly less than what is allowed by --
I understand that, but one of the questions that is in the application is how is that going to affect the neighboring?
Oh, yeah. No, you certainly have --
And that's where I feel like that evaluation needs to be taken into consideration.
Now, you said the bottom layer, are you going to cut into the ground anywhere? I mean, how are you going to do the walkout basement?
Yeah, so the existing topography is going to be sloped along the foundation, so it will gradually slope. So you're driving at the upper level of the garage, and then on either side of the house will slope down ultimately to the walkout.
Indeed. Okay.
Right, and you can see that on the plans. We stopped by, picked up the plans and everything. I just, I have no ground height on those plans. They're not dimensioned, so I can't really evaluate that.
I think the only thing I would say is that, you know, we can look at the plans, but at the end of the day, the building inspector, if they have a matter of right to have a certain height on that, in that residential zone, if it exceeds that, then the building inspector would flag it, and they'd have to, you know, they'd have to come back. But right now, according to what, you know, the applicant's saying is that it meets the height requirements.
Right, it meets the requirement, absolutely, but I don't know if it's necessarily the response to how is it affecting, you know, my property, the property value in the view of the lake if they build that up and I can no longer see the lake. That's going to negatively affect my property value, even though their response to that question says that there's not going to be any change because they're going to have a new building there and therefore increase all of our property values.
Okay. The garage, is the garage -- I went there, I looked at it, but is the garage higher than the camp? Is it set up higher?
I think it's probably about the same.
About the same?
Yeah. I don't remember exactly.
Yeah. Okay. I'm just trying to see if I can estimate it, but I can't.
Yeah, it was tough to estimate. I mean, across the street, I can see it. I'm looking at the plans. I just can't really tell. There's no new building on the existing, on the architectural plans to check it against. That's all.
Okay. And you looked at the plans for the new house?
I have the ones from ATA and then also the site plan, but the site plan is up, that's fine for setbacks and all that, but it doesn't show anything about existing height and proposed height.
And how far back? I mean, like I said, I was there, it seemed like the house is behind or ways away. How far is your house from that?
So we're across the street. I'm in the white and gray house kitty corner, but like I said, my house is higher because of the slope, and when I stand on my --
Right, well, that's why I was going to say, I was going to mention the contour of the land.
Yeah, so when I stand on my second floor, which is my main floor, I'm looking out my living room window over top of the ridgeline of that house and seeing the lake, which I just think is if that ridgeline's growing, I'm no longer going to be looking out that way, and then my house would not have a lake.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So again, are you cutting into the land at all for the cellar hall?
It will be, yeah, for the cellar hall, it will be.
Okay. So from the ground level?
Yep.
On the outside?
Yep.
To the top of the roof will be 23 feet?
At the garage, yes.
Yeah, correct.
Right, correct. Yep.
All right. That's all the questions I have for now. Anybody have any new questions based on the new information?
No, I'm just, so I'm looking at that, and if you're saying to me that this is 23 feet, right, from this to there, to the peak, is 23 feet?
The highest peak, yeah.
The highest peak, and then it looks like the proposed addition here is only going to be a few feet more than what this is, right? If that's 23 feet, it may be a couple more feet?
So your cursor is right now at that highest peak, and that's the high point.
That's the high point, which is 23 feet?
From there to the top of foundation is 23 feet.
Okay.
Yep.
And I was just pointing to that.
That ridge point.
Right, right.
My question is, where is that garage you drive by today? It's not 23 feet tall.
Right.
Or where you are when you look at that. So am I going up 10 foot from what's there? Am I going up eight foot, four foot? Like, there's zero reference point to understand that as in a butter.
It doesn't, I mean, I don't know, because again, I'm guessing, in my head, I'm guessing it's going to be about, and I don't know, maybe five or six feet difference, because we're only talking 23. That's not a tall building.
I'm happy to evaluate it once I have the information. I just think the application is missing that information. That's all I'm asking, is that they can go back and get that from, their architects should be able to give the delta of distance that changes from the existing house to the new. And I think as in a butter, we were owed that information so we can evaluate that appropriately.
I understand that, but I also, they have, you know, if they build the building to the height that is in the bylaw, that's, they have a right to do that, whether that blocks your view or not. You know, everybody wants the view of the lake, but at the end of the day, they have the ability to, as long as it's done by the bylaw and that they have the height and the setbacks and so forth, they have the ability to do that.
Right, I don't disagree with that. I think I just want to bring up the discrepancy with the board to understand, A, that the plans that were provided don't have any heights on them or any reference points, and that the answering of that question of how it's affecting the abutters isn't fully answered to, you know, viewpoints and all of that, because I think that that part wasn't considered.
So if they get you the height of where it would be, you'd be satisfied with if they put the height on the plans so you can see where the ridge is?
I'd like to understand, be able to look at the plans and be able to understand where my existing ridges are and where the new ridges are, because it's not just the existing ridge that's here on this plane. The building is coming forward closer to my house, and the ridge is coming up higher. So all of that --
They cover the contour of land.
And because they're moving, they're going to be building closer to Pearl Street.
Right, but I mean, it's going up because the land slopes down.
Right, right.
Right, which they can't control. That's one of the problems.
Again, I'm not necessarily trying to negate the build. All I'm trying to say is that I --
Oh, right. I understand.
There's missing information.
No, I understand your concerns, believe me.
Yes.
You know, if they were in here asking for, even if they were asking for the max height, 38, then we would probably be considering more of, you know, but 23 is a pretty reasonable height for a house.
I don't disagree, but I think the delta of what's there today and what's being proposed is more the conversation as opposed to, hey, we're allowed a max height there, because that's what's changing the look and style of the building that we're on.
And your concern, again, is that your view will be blocked, it will potentially be blocked by the house?
Yep, yep.
The reason that you're moving the house up is because you want to be conforming, correct, to the outer buffer zone? Is that right?
Number one, yep, for setback to the lake, and then to accommodate the new septic system, we've relocated that outside of the 50-foot buffer, and then there's setbacks associated with the septic system to the new house foundation as well. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board after the public? Here are none. I guess what I'm going to do, I'm still going to call for a motion. If anybody would like to condition it, that's fine, whatever you want to do, but I'm not sure that this is going to, the height of 23 feet is going to change anyway. That's up to the board. So I will ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the permit with the condition that the construction considers the view of the abutting personnel when constructing and make any adjustments if necessary to alleviate any problems.
I'm not sure how we could do that. I'm not sure how we could do that and alleviate, you know, if it doesn't alleviate it, does that sign it can't build?
I think the only thing we've done in the past, and I don't know, that's of course up to the applicant, is that, you know, they've had like a poll or something like that and saying, this is -- saying, this is the ridge line, you know, where they put something up where they can see it, so the abutter sees it, they see it, and then, you know, they can come back. I mean, all the other thing you can do is condition it, you know, approval condition that, you know, it meets the 23 feet. But, I mean, any suggestions on that? Like, if you were to figure out where that corner, that corner is right here where the garage is or where the peak is?
Yep.
And, you know, go from wherever that is, 23 feet up, so, you know, the abutter can see where, if that's gonna impact her.
Yeah, we're open to that.
Let me ask you this, what's your timeline for the building on this? I mean, are you trying to do stuff before the wintertime comes?
They're anxious to get going, but we still haven't met with conservation yet, that's scheduled for January, January 3, I believe, so that's still in process.
I guess the question is, we probably won't meet, right, the next meeting?
No, it won't be till January.
Yeah, beginning of January, so.
We could meet on the 27th.
On the 27th?
Unless anybody's. That would be our next regular scheduled meeting.
I mean, just between the board? I mean, I understand the abutters' concern, and I'm always concerned about the abutters, especially if you're gonna have a view that's gonna be taken away. If the timeline is that you have to go to the Conservation Commission in January, you know, to appease the abutter, you know, maybe you guys could find that corner, put the, you know, figure out what your dimensions are on the height and, you know, put a poll up or some kind of, something so that she can see where that is in relation to it and bring it back to the next meeting, and perhaps we have a understanding, better understanding. Either you put the, you know, the height, the change of height on the architectural planes so we can see it, or you do something where, you know, where the height of the peak of the house is and the abutter's concerned about. I mean, that's, I mean, there's not really much else we can do other than, either they put the, you know, the dimensions, the height dimensions on the architectural plans, or you put something up where, you know, where she can see where the top of the peak is gonna be.
Okay.
I mean, really, it's the only other, there's nothing else we can do.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that, we can continue it and do that. In my mind, I'm not sure, like I say, 23 feet is not outrageous to me.
I don't think so either, considering if they have a right, I mean, if the bylaw says the bylaw.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it's a non-conforming house, a non-conforming lot, and to build a new house 23 feet in a night is...
And I think they've been very aware of, you know, making sure, I mean, I know that the, you know, there were some structures closer to the property lines that you guys are trying to alleviate.
Right.
And keep it at 99, which is where the existing, on the, I guess, on the east side. It is 99 now, so you're not encroaching any less than that.
That's correct, yeah.
So, Mr., I don't know if we have to, we have to make a...
There was no...
...over his motion, because there was no second?
No, we can continue it, there was no second.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we continue the meeting until a time...
27?
Proposed, the 27th. Is that okay? You think that's all right?
That's okay with us, yep, we can get some dimensioning on the architectural plans and provide some info on that.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we continue the hearing until the 27th of December and give the applicant time to come back with the height, and then we can discuss it at that time.
All right, second?
I'll second that motion.
Uh, vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. And aye. Okay, we'll continue to the 27th, 7 o'clock.
Thanks.
Thank you. And with that, Lisa, I'd like to read the next. Yeah, right. You are gonna put up a poll, excuse me, you are gonna put up a poll so they can actually see the height, correct?
We can try to do that, it's 23 feet off the ground, so I...
Yeah, just to, you know, so that they can actually see what the height is.
We'll try to make something out for that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll look into an option for that.
All right, very good. Thank you. With that, I'd like to read the next application.
This is an application for a special permit. Name and address of the applicant, Daniel Proctor, 1529 Massachusetts Avenue, Lunenburg. The undersigned makes application as follows. For a use special permit for a shopping center per section 250-4.1K20. For a special permit for dimensional variation to vary the requirement of section 250-6.5F4B. The sign shall be a minimum of 25 feet from the front property line and a minimum of 20 feet from the side property line. Proposed 5 feet to the front property line, 102 feet to the side property line. An application for the same dated October 2, 2023, was submitted to the building inspector and was denied by the same for the reasons attached in the letter here too. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, section 250-4.1K20 and 250-8.3B2D. The street address is 1325 Massachusetts Avenue in Lunenburg, assesses map 62 parcel 3. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is Bauer Bank 6 LLC, 1529 Massachusetts Avenue in Lunenburg, 01462. And the date is recorded in Western Northern District Registry Dead Book 10623, page 141, and recorded 8/22/23. If the undersigned has any knowledge of a prior appeal, application, or petition concerning the land or building involved in this case, describe the case and the dates involved. Use special permit for contractor yard pursuant to zoning by law section 250-4.1G issued October 6, 2022, and a special permit for dimensional variation pursuant to zoning by law section 250.9E6 issued October 6, 2022. And that is dated November 13, 2023 by Daniel and Jean Proctor of 1529 Mass Ave. The existing conditions. On behalf of the applicant, Daniel and Jean Proctor, Dillison Roy respectfully submits this narrative to the Zoning Board of Appeals as supplemental information pertaining to the special permit application pursuant to section 250-4.1K20 of the Lunenburg Protective Zoning Bylaw. This narrative is being submitted to present the project to the board and provide evidence that granting of the requested special permit will not cause substantial detriment to the town of, or neighborhood. The proposed project is located at 1325 Massachusetts Avenue, which is identified as map 62 parcel 3 in the Lunenburg assesses database. The property is owned commercial and contains approximately 5.9 acres of land. The property is located in the Zone 3 Water Supply Protection District and has access to municipal sewer and water. On October 6, 2022, the Zoning Board of Appeals voted unanimously to approve the special permit for contractor yard use at the property. Additionally, on October 6, 2022, the Board of Appeals voted unanimously to approve a special permit for dimensional variation for the proposed disturbance within the Lunenburg Zone 3 Aquifer District. On February 27, 2023, the Lunenburg Planning Board voted unanimously to approve an amendment to a site plan approval and stormwater permit for this project. Proposed conditions. The proposed project, as previously presented and approved, involves the construction of a 5,400-square-foot office building, a 5,000-square-foot personal improvement building, and a prefabricated 14,400-square-foot 10-bay commercial building to serve as rental space and place of operation for local businesses and tradesmen. Each of the three proposed buildings will have designated parking spaces along the proposed roadway and immediately adjacent to the building. Subsequently to the approval by both the Zoning Board and Planning Board, the owners were notified by the Building Commissioner that since the property will consist of more than three commercial establishments, a use special permit for a shopping center from the Zoning Board of Appeals is required. A shopping center is defined in the Lunenburg zoning bylaw as a single piece of real estate containing more than three commercial establishments and total business space of more than 5,000 square feet planned, constructed, and management as a total entity with customer and employee parking provided on site. Since the time of the Zoning Board approval in 2022, there have been no design changes to any building dimensions, building locations, and parking space locations. The purpose of the special permit application is to allow for three or more different byright or contractor yard uses. Additionally, a special permit for dimensional variance is to vary the regulation of section The sign shall be a minimum of 25 feet from the front property line and a minimum of 20 feet from the side property line. The proposed freestanding development sign is located 25 feet from the Mass Ave pavement. However, given the width of Route 2A, right of way, the proposed sign is 5 feet off the front property line. As such, the applicant is seeking a 20-foot reduction in the required 25-foot property line setback requirement. The sign will be installed 25 feet from Mass Avenue and will be protected with vertical granite curbing at the site entrance. The sign is also located behind an existing utility pole within the Route 2 right of way. Special permit criteria. The questions and answers are as follows. A, will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The response, shopping center. The proposed commercial building is located at the rear of the property in the same location previously approved by the Zoning Board and Planning Board. The proposed building is approximately 100 feet from the side lot line, 140 feet from the rear lot line, and over 325 feet away from the front property line, the 2A right of way. Given the nature of the proposed lines, uses, heavy traffic through the development is not anticipated, nor any danger of fire or explosion on the property. Proposed sign. The proposed sign will be located approximately 25 feet from the Mass Ave pavement and behind the existing utility infrastructure within the road utility poles. The sign will be protected with the new vertical granite curb proposed at the entrance to the site. B, will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The response, shopping center. The proposed building will increase the assessed property, the assessed value of the property and also the market value of the property. The contractor yard will provide a new amenity to the town of Lunenburg, will have a positive effect on land values in the neighborhood. The special permit will allow other byright commercial uses in the building, which will provide additional opportunities for local businesses to thrive. Proposed sign. The proposed sign will accompany the proposed commercial development and will not have an adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood. C, will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order sightlines if in open use? The shopping center, as mentioned above, the proposed building has been located as far as possible from the neighboring properties. The proposed fenced-in areas behind the building will be installed with privacy slats as previously conditioned by the Zoning Board, and landscaping as proposed along the eastern and northern property line to provide a buffer between the site and the abutting properties. The proposed sign, with the exception of the special permit being sought for the location of the sign, the sign will conform to all applicable sections of the Protective Zoning Bylaw. And D, will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? Shopping center, the proposed use consists of 10 bays located within an enclosed building which will limit any noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, and glare. An existing earth and berm restored with loam, seed, and landscaping will provide a visual and sound buffer for the proposed use, helping to mitigate any impacts to the adjacent properties. Proposed sign, will be installed in an area restored with loam and seed or landscaping and will not produce any detrimental noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines. The attached memo to the Zoning Board of Appeals dated August 25. The purpose of this letter is to provide written authorization to allow staff from Dillison Roy Civil Design Group to represent the proposed project at 1325 Massachusetts Ave. And that's signed by Daniel and Jean Proctor, applicants and owners. The certified abutters list is attached. All the abutters were notified two weeks prior to this hearing. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and with that, I invite the applicant to speak to the issues.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board, as always. Lisa, thank you for the reading of the narrative. My name is Greg Roy with Dillison Roy Civil Design Group, and I'm representing the applicant this evening. Thank you for your time. I wanted to introduce this by saying a couple things that we're not doing as part of this application. Nothing in this application, or nothing of this project, is changing from when we were before you aboard back in 2022. And some of you may not remember back that far, because I have, I'm having a harder time remembering back that far myself, but we came before you for a special, two special permit applications, as we said in the application package. One was for the special permit for the contractor's yard use, which you granted, and the other was for a dimensional variation special permit for the work proposed land disturbance within the Aquifer Protection District, which was also granted. And at the time, when we were discussing particularly relative to the proposed use contractor's yard, we, our testimony was such that, what was that? We, while we are proposing a contractor yard use, we have some interested parties, such as landscape contractors and things, that would meet the definition of that use code within your bylaw. We are also expecting to have uses like an electrician or a trade shop or that kind of thing, or a plumber, that would not rise to the level of contractor yard, but would otherwise be allowed as byright in the district. None of that has changed. We're still proposing the same exact program that we were in the building at that time. None of the site metrics are changing. The parking, the building location, you're all probably where the building is now up, the applicant has received the building permit and is working on the construction of that building. None of those metrics are changing. The only reason why we're here is because the applicant, well, we're here for two reasons. We're here for the shopping center, because our town bylaw defines a shopping center, in my view, very broadly. So you might not think of a use like this as a shopping center, we certainly didn't back in 2022 when we first came before you and met on numerous occasions with the previous building commissioner and planner. But the way that it's defined in here, it's really any commercial property that is proposing to have three independent uses on the property, regardless of whether or not they're byright in and of themselves, meets the definition of a shopping center. So if we're going to have that here, which we do expect to have, we have, we expect to have multiple uses, we could have as many as 10 different uses in that back building, plus the building on the southerly side of Plan South, the building on the front of the site, the office building, personal improvement building. We do anticipate having more than three uses, so the interpretation given by the current building commissioner was that we needed this special permit. We wish that we knew it back then, because we would have done it jointly with the last process. We weren't, this wasn't anything other than an interpretive issue relative to the bylaw, which is why we're here this evening. The second reason we're here is relative to the sign, and I'll just diverge from this podium for a minute and just point out where we're proposing the sign. The sign is proposed right here. It's that little rectangle, it's also on your plans, just for the audience, it's right in this location here. The bylaw requires the sign to be located 25 feet back from the edge of the right-of-way line, so we would have to, we would have to construct that approximately 20 feet further back away from the edge of the road to comply with the bylaw. On these wider road rightaways, we have this issue where the edge of the pavement is actually 20 feet, this 20 feet of green space that the state, in this case, owns between the edge of the right-of-way line and the edge of the pavement. So if we were to comply with, put the sign in the location compliant with the bylaw, we'd be 45 feet back from the road, which is just, in our view, fairly excessive, kind of negates the reason for putting a sign in, which is visibility. So, there's, you know, some wooded vegetation to the, on the Plan South, it's actually to the west, that, you know, would prohibit, obstruct the view if we were to put it there. So we're really trying to put it in a more customary location, which relative to the edge of pavement would be 25 feet back from the edge of pavement, which is a much more customary location. But to do that, it would require dimensional relief relative to the sign placement. We are not proposing any other dimensional variation to the sign, so in all other respects of the signed bylaw, height, illumination, size, overall square footage, we're proposing complete compliance with the bylaw. It's just the horizontal... complete compliance with the bylaw. It's just the horizontal location relative to the lot line. I am going to stop there. Mr. Chair, happy to take any questions that you folks may have.
Just on the back lot, the 10 garages, we had posed a lot of conditions on that. I'm not sure what the other uses back there would be, but of course, is there a tenant agreement, written agreement with all the conditions and hours and all of that? Everything's going to stay?
We are not proposing to modify any of the conditions in the previous permit. That permit's enforced. It's recorded.
And as they sign in, they will be signing.
I don't know that you have any formal lease agreements yet, but no.
No, because they will have all that garbage in front of them, like the regulations by the town.
Okay. Yeah, because I was going to say, I know the residential is 100, whatever it is, 40 feet or whatever it is, but we still want to make sure that those papa zones and stuff are all in place.
We're not asking the board to modify any of those conditions. That's why I opened it the way I did. We're not proposing any changes to this. It's really just a matter of the types of uses we're proposing, which again, haven't changed from the time when we first presented this to you. It's now being interpreted that that requires the special permit under the shopping center provisions. We're not proposing a strip mall here either. You know, it's not like you would envision by hearing the word "shopping center." I mean, the building's up, so you can see.
It's strictly the bylaws stating three or more.
That's right. It's just because of the definition of shopping center in the bylaws.
Okay. Now, I'll open it up to the board.
I would assume that when I drove, driven by several times, there's one or two telephone poles that are right about where you want to put your sign. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think we have it on this plan. Let me see if I can show you. Is it right in front? I don't have it. Do we know where the pole is, Ryan?
We got the pole, it's like right there.
Right off the, yeah. So the pole is immediately in front of where we're proposing the sign. So right off the edge of that, right off the edge of the radius.
Will they be conflicting with the sign?
The utility pole? No, the utility pole's within the right-of-way, and the sign would be completely on private property. So there wouldn't be any conflict there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So what you're saying is the road taken by the state is an additional 20 feet?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the only question I have is, so I'm looking at this where your sign is on the plot plan. So there's, you're proposing a granite curb at the intersection with 2A. So you're saying from that curb into where that proposed sign is, is 20 feet already?
From the existing edge of the Mass Ave pavement.
Yeah. So you'd go, so then what they want is, they want, really what they want is if you were to comply with the right-of-way for the state and then add the 25 feet, you're saying you'd be 45 feet in from?
From the edge of the pavement. That's right.
Yeah. So where I'm looking at it right now, where you have five feet from the property line.
Correct.
You're requesting, I don't see any reason, I agree with you. I mean, you're going to have your curb cut, and then you're going to go in essentially 20 feet and then have your sign?
That's, well, 25 feet from the edge of the existing edge of pavement, it actually looks like it's probably a little less than that.
Yeah.
To the edge, in places, to the edge of the radius, to the curb. But it still, it looks like it's going to be in excess of 10 or 15 feet.
Yeah. And then if we enforce the 20 feet, you'd be 45 feet, really, essentially.
We would be 45, yeah. We'd be 45. We'd be 25 feet from the right-of-way line. So it would be another 20 feet back into the site from where we're showing it on the plate.
Okay. Yep, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Any comments from the public? Seeing none. Do we have one? Yeah?
Dale Erskine in Abutter. Just checking on shopping mall and the hours of operation. Is it different from contractor stores?
No, that's why I asked the question about the lease agreements. There is, we did restrict hours on that.
That was like 11:00 PM to 4:00 AM.
That's correct.
And the shopping malls, the same sort of hours of operation?
When we're talking about uses, shopping mall is what it falls under besides contractors' yard. But I don't think you're going to see, am I correct? This isn't going to be retail and places open that, you know what I mean? They're not going to be.
But I mean, people can go in at 4:00 AM and start clanging around, right?
What's that?
People can go in at 4:00 AM and start messing around over there.
That's what they had determined the last time. That is correct.
At a shopping mall, can they do that, though? Or is that, I mean, I'm just wondering if there's a difference.
The difference is strictly the fact that a shopping mall, like he had said, it's really, I'm not going to say poorly, it's really open. It's just simply, it's, shopping mall is simply three or more. And because it's 10, it's three or more.
Shopping malls don't have hours of operation?
No, they don't have.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. That's what I was just asking.
No, I know. I understand. I know, because I looked all through here to see if there's any other regulations.
Right, yeah.
And from what I see, the only thing it refers to is three or more.
Okay. I was just wondering, who I go to to talk about the color of the roof on the place?
Color of the roof.
Who would I go to for that? Do I come before you guys, or, I mean, we were proposed a dark brown roof, and we have a silver white roof. So that's all we see.
Okay.
Who do I go to about that?
First, I'll ask them about the roof.
Yeah. How did that happen? We see this. How did that happen? Any idea?
I don't think we conditioned any roof color.
Well, we were told they were going to be unobtrusive colors, and they were going to be dark.
Obtrusive colors, not a dark.
We have a white silver with silver stacks, and I'm also worried about the emissions coming out of all those stacks, because we are at level. The stacks come up, and our house is up here right at the level.
Okay.
So who do we talk to about that? I was assuming it was going to be a dark roof, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I know.
You see a white silver roof, and that's all you see?
Okay. Yeah, I don't, this board, I don't believe that we conditioned any color unless, it may be in there. I don't have the conditions in front of me.
Well, I mean, you're told something. You sure want to believe what you're told.
Is there anything in here in that? Sure. I mean, the only person I could say that you could see about it would be the building commissioner. Yeah. I'm asking the applicants because they're right here.
I don't know that we have a comment on it tonight, Mr. Chair, so.
The only thing, I don't know if this really addresses that, but this was in there. The proposed buildings will not be unsightly in the combination of restored green space and development area will provide a cohesive site that fits into the characteristics of the neighborhood. That's the only thing that is far as the building was just put in.
So I think, Mr. Chair, for me, I think that if there was a zoning-related issue or a issue relative to the zoning relief, the zoning decision that your board issued, I do believe that the building commissioner would be the person that would review and act or not act on that issue.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the board? Here are none. I'll take a motion.
We're only acting on one.
You're acting on two. You're acting on the shopping center uses, and you're acting on the signage, the setback.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept, I guess the site is a shopping center since it's going to have three buildings on it, and then I'd like to grant the relief of 20 feet for the sign and have a five-foot setback from the property line at Mass Ave.
I'll second. I have a motion, a second. I will call for a vote.
Aye.
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 And I.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I don't believe the building inspector can do anything about it.
I thought it was cut off. I thought you were getting.
Why didn't you say?
I get to the abutters, and I'm like, this one, it wasn't connected. And then I'm like, oh, oh.
Well, because it was a rehash. Okay. Anytime you're ready, Lisa.
I'm ready.
Read the next one.
This is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Thomas Crocker, 899 Flat Hill Road in Lunenburg. The undersigned makes application as follows. Requesting a special permit to reconstruct a non-conforming structure onto partial existing foundation and new foundation that has been installed in the exact same location and footprint. An application for the same dated November 2, 2023, was submitted to the building inspector and was denied for the same reasons stated in the letter attached here, too. Has the proposed action begun? Yes. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw. Non-conforming structures, Section 250, 7.4 of the zoning bylaw. Any and all other relief deemed required by the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals. The street address is 899 Flat Hill Road in Lunenburg, assessors map 122, parcel 55. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land, which is the subject of this case, is Thomas J. Crocker, 899 Flat Hill Road in Lunenburg. The deed is recorded in Western Northern District Registry of Deeds Book 8937, page 183, and recorded October 17, 2017. The special permit questions and answers are as follows. A. Will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The reply: No, it was an existing single-family home and will be a single-family home. We will have no impacts in any way to infrastructure or traffic. B. Will this action have a material adverse effect on value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The reply: No, this will have no adverse effect on the value of land and will, in fact, increase the property value and benefit the neighborhood value. C. Will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use? C. The use will have no impact on the project. D. Will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? The reply: The proposed use is in conformance with the surrounding area and neighborhood of single-family home users. The following information is provided because it is considered important to the case. This is my family's home. We needed more space to accommodate our growing family and decided to put on an addition and remodel the home. Both a demolition and building permit were issued by the building department for that work. We received our demolition permit and plan to leave the first-floor framing and fieldstone foundation in place. Most of the existing home was built on fieldstone foundation with the exception of certain areas that were replaced in 1990 with a concrete foundation. Plans were altered in August when it was determined after a meeting with the building commissioner that the existing fieldstone foundation would not support the second-story construction proposed and would have to be removed. The intention at that time was to demolish the majority of the structure with the fieldstone foundation and to leave three walls over the existing concrete foundation, which would be safe to add a second story to. During the demolition, a portion of the house to remain was separated to allow it to stay upright during demolition. While cautiously removing the fieldstone foundation, a portion supporting the addition crumbled and the house sank towards the concrete foundation. At that point, the portion of the house over the concrete foundation was not safe to remain and was also demolished. It was never the intention for the three walls in Level 1 floor to be removed over the existing concrete foundation walls. It was just not safe to leave in that condition. Due to the removal of the full structure, the building commissioner has determined that we need a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals for reconstruction. Note, I have a demo D 22-16 and building permit B 22-54. Signed 16th of November of 2023 by Thomas Crocker of 899 Flat Hill Road. Attached is a site plan done by Dillison Roy. There is a copy of the application for demo permit and an application for a building permit. There is a copy of the quick claim deed, a field card from the assessors office, and there is a list of abutters that were all notified two weeks prior to this hearing. And there are building plans. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And with that, the applicant is already at the mic. Please give your name and address and say whatever you would like.
I, Thomas Crocker, 899 Flat Hill Road. Thank you all for meeting me for this application. I think that I kind of put it all in there in the additional information to be provided. Initially, this building permit was pulled to just rip the roof off and put a second story on, and I got the permit under the old commissioner, went to meet the new commissioner before we started work. He said, you know, take the fieldstone out. Okay, I'll put a new basement in. So then, because we're on Lake Shirley, we're like 96 feet from the water, I went to conservation with Dillison Roy. We got a notice of intent, approved order conditions issued. So then we went to start work, took the house down, took two-thirds of the house down, everything on fieldstone down. And then, as we started taking the fieldstone out, the 1990 addition kind of started coming with it, and it just kind of did one of those, and just didn't seem right to leave there. So we just said, we'll pull this out. We're going to leave these three foundation walls. I misunderstood the difference between foundation walls and 2x4 walls. I approved the contractors to take the rest of it down, leaving the concrete foundation, and put the new foundation in, called for a foundation inspection, and the new commissioner said, what the heck? And I didn't know that I was doing anything wrong. But apparently I did. So, building commissioner asked me to file for a new demolition permit. I did. The demo delay determination was approved last Thursday, so there's no delay. The demo delay determination was approved last Thursday, so there's no delay. And the new building permit is just held up on the special permit to reconstruct the home on a nonconforming lot.
Okay. Okay, so if I have this right, you pulled the permit on 11/28/22-
Yeah.
-to do an addition.
Yep.
Correct. And they gave you that permit to do the addition?
Correct.
Okay. And when you say that, the foundation that was there, the fieldstone, I think there was a section that they told you that you would need to take out?
Yes, um, sorry, I don't have a, I didn't know, I should bring a board. I'd have it up there. If you'd like, I can hold it in point, but essentially, actually, I do have something that I could share with you. If this at all helps, um, this is, shows the, over the years, the permits pulled for the reconstructive work, where you can kind of see the original home. You can see the original home is that the front section there.
Okay.
So, basically, like 50%, 60% of the home was built on fieldstone, and, um, after the meeting with the commissioner in August, he said, "You can't put a second story on fieldstone." Ripped that out, put a new foundation in, and I said, "Okay, no problem. What do you need?" He said, "Get me a foundation drawing, get me structural framing drawings." Got them within like four to six days. Never, I uploaded them to the permit portal, called the commissioner, didn't hear anything back, figured I was okay, went to conservation, got approval there. I figured, "It's been two months. All right, let's rock and roll." Rented a house, moved the family out, and we started. And now we have, you know, a hole in the ground, and renting a house, we're paying a mortgage, you know?
We knew, we knew, when the houses started taking more down, and you decided to demolish the whole house, raise the whole house, you didn't think to go back to, I mean, you were going from a, an addition to a tear-down and a complete rebuild of a new house, and you didn't think that maybe you should go back to the building commissioner and-
I honestly, I didn't think of it. I thought that because we were leaving the three foundation walls, that would, that would, that counted. I don't, that's what I thought, I don't know.
Okay. Now, I went in and looked. Where is the old wall? Because to me, it looked like it was all brand-new.
Um, I can, so on that drawing-
I just passed it down.
Oh, sorry. So this 19, those three walls on the top of the page, that 1990 edition.
Okay, so it was these three?
Yeah.
This is the original? This is what they approved?
Yeah, that was the, that was the concrete foundation from 1990.
Okay. All right, so, and this was all fieldstone?
Yeah, that was all fieldstone or, yeah, or gone old lumber, yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, so you, just continuing, so when you, after you tore it down, you poured a new foundation. I assume you went to get your first inspection done, which is the foundation, and that's when they said, "Where you get mad at?"
That's when the commissioner said, "This is a new home. You're going to need a hers rating, you're going to need," you know, and he looked and he said, "This is a nonconforming lot, you're going to get a special permit." I said, "Okay, tell me what I got to do to get back to, you know, getting everyone home," you know?
Okay. Okay, because it's difficult for us now to determine what was there and what, you know, what the sites were, what setbacks were, and all of that, because the house is no longer there.
Um, so I did have Dillison Roy, because they were involved in the notice of intent. They did do the setbacks, and they pinned all the corners from the pre-existing to the new foundation. So everything was, I don't know if they GPS it or they survey it, you know, total machine, whatever they call it. It was, they were out there several times before the demolition started, and they assured me everything was pinned in the exact location.
Okay.
The only thing that changed is it's square now, and it wasn't square, but it's not.
Okay. The other question I have, the parking, where that, I guess, I forget where the box that was up there and the tied, is that your parking area?
Uh, yes.
Or is that part of the town, or is that?
No, that is, since we moved here in 2017, that's been parking.
Okay. But that's, I mean, that's part of your property?
I mean, if you look at the lot lines, it doesn't look like it, but it's-
That's kind of why I'm asking.
Yeah.
Why, if that's a parking area, or if that's your property, or it isn't?
Uh, so it's, since we bought it and moved in, or since they did the septic in '16 or '17, as far as I know, that's been there. I did a, like a street view, and it was an old street view, and that was parking back before they did the septic. That's really all I know about that, but technically, it's, you see the lot lines on the, they're, they're really tight on the front of the house.
Yeah, okay. With that, I'm going to open it up to the board. Questions?
So basically, you have a completely new foundation, or do you still have one wall that's-
I still have the three 1990 concrete walls.
And just the one front wall that's fieldstone?
No, there's no fieldstone at this point.
What's the fourth wall?
Um, so the, oh, where the 1990 tied in, so that was what was going to remain, fieldstone. And then as we started to remove some of this fieldstone over here, it all just crumbled. It was just like river rock and dry mortar and-
So everything has been replaced, including what was in 1990?
Yeah, we, I put a, you know, a new retaining wall there so much as, because it was, the 1990 addition has a dirt crawl space, so it's really six-foot walls with dirt. So we just put a retaining wall there, essentially.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so, so I take it that the building inspector was concerned that you knocked a demoed building down without a permit, a nonconforming-
So we-
...structure?
So we did have a demo permit.
But just for the, not to demo the entire house?
As I, as I found out on November 2, when I called for a foundation inspection, yes. Yes.
So you're just trying to right the wrong? I mean, you didn't know that you had to get a demo permit to take the entire thing down?
I didn't know, well, after our meeting in August, you know, the commissioner and I went over the permit and the demo permit, and he said, "I think we're good here, because you have a demo permit with no restrictions or limitations," or, and he said, "Leave these three walls." I thought that, obviously, I wanted to try and leave the first floor, but I honestly misunderstood, and I didn't know the difference between leaving wood walls and concrete walls and-
And now, since August, you've been trying to get this rectified and-
I, well, this has really been, uh, since November 2, when I called for a foundation inspection.
Okay. And obviously, you want to get in as soon as possible.
Well, I mean, not to talk about hardships, but we're paying rent and a mortgage, and we have a single income. So, yes, I'm trying to get back in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Just one, just one question. So the new proposed structure is going to have the same footprint?
Exact same footprint. The only difference-
You see, there's going to be an overhang and a deck, right?
Overhang, and on a separate building permit, there will be, the old deck will be going in the same spot, but it will kind of be added on to in the little elbow of the home on a new building permit, but that's why I wanted a special permit to apply to the decks and the overhangs, really, in the future, in less than two years.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had one question. So the 1990 that was on here, that was the existing?
Yes.
Okay, and that, is that a foundation now, or no?
That is a eight-inch concrete foundation, um, six-foot walls. It's kind of like the dirt crawl space I was talking about.
Okay, okay, and so the part that, during demo, the part that collapsed, is that here or is that over here?
That was the, yeah, that was right where the 1990 tied into the 1925.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So you intended to keep that?
I did.
Okay.
No more questions?
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions from the board? Any public comments? Please?
These are my neighbors.
Name and address, and say whatever you'd like.
Good evening. My name's Bob Hollows, I live at 25 Spring Street. Three houses up from the corner. I'm a retired engineer, plus I was a state construction inspector, and being retired 13 years, I walk down and get my mail daily. And as construction was being taken place, I'd stand there and watch and do my inspection, which, being nosy and still wanting to work, but not really. What I saw across the fieldstone foundation, I knew right away, there's no way you're going to put two stories up on that, and it was falling apart. The addition that was put on to that house that he's talking about was, wasn't done properly. They didn't even put a beam across. So when this fieldstone came out, that was collapsing like this, all rotted. I could see signs of rot on the addition sill plates going around. It was no worth trying to save. Also, look up in the attic, they had a fire in there at one time, in the existing addition. And, I mean, I would have had no objection to, you know, just leaving the foundation, the newly-poured foundation on the 1990, whenever that was done, but, and I support, you know, him building, it's an improvement for our neighborhood. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else from the audience like to speak? Anybody out from the public, please?
Hi, Jean Hollows, 25 Spring Street, and a butter to Tom and Sheila, and I would just like to strongly support what they are doing there. Beautiful family in the neighborhood, and they've already been through a lot. They actually met with historic committee last week, too, and they were fine with everything. He explained what happened, and I just think maybe if, between the change and the building inspector from before and then now, and I think that Tom was trying to follow everything that should have been done correctly, so wherever there was some miscommunication or whatever, I don't think that should continue to hold up their project, because I would love to see them get into that house. They have two beautiful little children that we look at like grandchildren, you know? They walk by and we talk to them. So I would just strongly support the approval of this special permit for them, and thank you very much for considering that.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? No one? Here are none? Do you have another comment you would like to make?
Um, nope, just thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you. With that, I would call for a motion.
I'll make the motion that we allow for a special permit to reconstruct a nonconforming structure onto the foundation that's been completed thus far and inspected.
Jim, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 And aye. With that, the special permit is granted. I do have to read you the post-decision. Okay, I do have to read you one little thing, the post-decision on this. The special permit is granted with the contingency that the petition complies with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with conditions. Noncompliance, such conditions may result in revocation of this permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court 20 days after decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. A special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use of construction has commenced. With that, good luck with your new house.
Thank you all.
Luck, good luck. If there's nothing else in front of the board, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. The board is adjourned.